Okay, we have a quorum. We're going to call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting into order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're going to go ahead and forego the invocation and pledge of allegiance tonight. I'm going to make sure that we don't have any citizens to be heard. Okay. See, first item of business, first and only discuss and consider methods to finance street improvements and drainage improvements in the city, including the issuance of certificates of obligation or voted general obligation bonds. Discussions on procedures required to call a bond election for November 3rd, 2020, and if appropriate, take possible action to rescind resolution number 2020-07-14, approved on July 14th, 2020 relating to publishing a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation. So, the reason that I brought this item forward is because I had had conversations with members of our city about what exactly we're doing for the city and trying to move it forward. And it came to my attention that not a lot of people knew what exactly we were trying to do. And I couldn't help but feel like for the size of the magnitude of this project, people should know. And we should have their buy-in, especially with this happening during the pandemic. And people are a little preoccupied with everything else going on. That being said, I did have some conversations and it turns out that we can go the general bond route, which is effectively the same method, but it will allow us to engage the citizenry and let them have their say, that this is something that they want. I do think it's imperative that this is something that we do and do now. As Mr. Gregory can attest, once the economy starts to rebound, interest rates will likely go up and make the cost of borrowing that much more, which will make it, I don't want to say harder, but we will have to pay more and get less for it. Now, that being said, I wanted to bring it forward to council so we can have a discussion and hopefully make a decision in the best interest of the city. Mr. Rapley.
Mayor, thank you. We have Mark McLeaney, Linney on the, on the Zoom from SAMCO. As you recall, Andrew Freeman, who's with SAMCO and works with Mark, was here and presented the presentation on which options are for general obligations or certificates of obligations. He's here to answer any questions moving forward if council decides, ultimately, if this is the route that you all want to go tonight. And then Tom Spurgeon is here from McCall, Parkhurst, for our bond attorney, if you have any questions in regards to that. I think the idea tonight is to get councils' input and consideration because the deadline for us to publicize the notice of intent would be this Friday. So if you wanted to rescind that, now is the time to do that. And obviously, as the mayor indicated, we have the window to do the general obligation bond. And as a result of that, myself as city manager with our engineers will provide a sort of presentation and itemized list of potential projects for this bond at the August 11th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Mr. McLeaney, I didn't know if you have anything as far as what might the next steps look like for this process?
I think you did a very good job of summarizing it. If council wants to rescind, you want to do it prior to the next publication. And the time to call a bond election is first couple of weeks in August for a November bond election. At this point, there's been no real expenses other than the publication expenses that you have. If council wishes to move forward with a bond election, Tom Spurgeon's there. We'd have to meet in the first couple of weeks of August to get that called, and it would be on your November ballot for consideration. There, you, the mayor brought up interest rates. Over the next six months, there's no belief that interest rates are going higher. But your old crystal ball is probably better than mine. And there's no guarantees that rates won't go up. Interest rates right now on a 20-year bond would be two and a half percent ballpark, perhaps lower. We don't know where they will be in January or February by the time you have a successful election. But again, no real thought in the next six months to a year, rates going up dramatically. They may go up a little bit, but wouldn't go up dramatically is probably the consensus. It really is a business decision for council on how to bring in the citizenry to help make the decision.
Mark, also, can you provide a little bit on the pros and cons? Because the pros are that we are being transparent, but the con is that if the election fails, I don't think we can do this again for two or three years, I believe.
No, Tom, if Tom is there, he knows the law better than I, but on a bond election, you could call it as many times as you want without delay a CO that has been petitioned. We cannot then call bond election for two years. But Tom, I see you're standing there, please.
Mark, it's good to see you. I'm Tom Spurgeon with McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton.
Yes, sir, please. Thank you.
Very good. You bet. Yeah, there's a couple of things with all of that. The, let me step back for just a little bit in terms of if, if you did not rescind the CO ordinance or the CO notice of intention resolution tonight and proceeded with the publication, you wouldn't, you would possibly could get a petition signed by 5% of your registered, of the registered voters of the city before you actually would sell the COs, which right now would have been scheduled for September 15. If that happens, you're going to be outside of the ability to call an election to approve COs until next May. So that's part of this whole timing issue in terms of what do you decide tonight? Do you decide to essentially, okay, we're going to rescind the notice of intention resolution and then consider a bond election on August the 11th? That's, that's really sort of the whole reason you've got sort of the timing issue. With respect to the ability to call an election again, if this election, if you hold the election and it fails in November, Mark's absolutely right. You can call another one in May. What Mark was, I think, getting at is if you issue COs or you're not able to, the law says that if you've had a failed bond election, you're not able to issue COs for the same project for a period of three years. So it's not, you can't really essentially do an end around to the citizens. If it fails, you can hold another election. You just can't come around again and have a CO issue for up to three years from the time that an election failed. So that's sort of the nuance of that timing. Yes, sir.
You said by the same project. And in this case, it would mean this identical streets, because we got lots of streets that need to be fixed.
And that's a great question. And it, it depends on how you word your resolution, if, or how you word your proposition language. If it's very, very broad to construct street improvements in the city, I think you'd have a hard time coming back, and that, and that fails, let's just say that fails. I think you'd have a hard time coming back. And although we'd look at it, and we'd probably have to clear it with the Attorney General's office, but I think it would be difficult to come back for a certificate of obligation saying, okay, now we're looking for a $5 million street CO for these specific streets. I think the AG would, would have some problems with that in terms of whether that complies with the law. Now, if it's the opposite, if you listed certain streets, that fails, you could, I think you could come back with a CO for different streets. It's a different project. So I mean, it's just all kind of depends on the way you word things. We frankly kind of, it all depends on how, what the council feels is the best way to present your proposition. We generally would recommend that you be as general as you can, so that gives you the flexibility to make decisions as, as time goes on in terms of what streets to be done. But having said that, every community is different. And you may have some real needs that the citizens are really looking to do these four or five particular streets, and you name those. And then you can also provide language and any other streets that in the city or something of that effect. So I mean, there's a number of ways we can do it, councilman. But, and those are all kinds of things we probably need to talk with city manager. And although the time is short in terms of how general or specific you want to be or need to be.
Can you give us a generalization of a city our size? What is the normal process that they do? Do they issue bonds from the deus? Or do they go out to people for a voting on a bond issue, generally speaking?
I would say, and Mark could probably weigh on this as, maybe even better than I, I would say that you probably have more certificates of obligation issued in the state of Texas for general obligation improvements by cities than you do voted obligation bonds. But again, each community is different. And if you think there's a significant chance that you're going to get 5% of your registered voters to sign a petition, forcing you to an election, that's going to, that's going to stop anything that you would do this fall in terms of issuing COs.
When does the clock start?
It literally started from the time that, that you approved the notice of intention resolution. It ends, it ends on the time that you approve the ordinance, actually authorizing the issuance of the COs. That's not until September 15. And anytime in between there, they can come and present a petition to, to the city, and then you would certify the votes as whether or not they're valid. Signatures, nothing but votes, but signatures. And at that point, that would essentially stop the process if, if that's what was presented to you.
But in stopping the process, it puts us past the ability to do a November ballot?
It does. It does. Because you, you cannot call an election after August 17. You cannot call a bond election or
Which essentially forces us to May.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
We had a bond election that failed miserably because the people running it basically said, well, we don't know what we're going to do with it. Just give us the money. We'll figure it out later.
Right.
And that went down like the Titanic. And we had a specific bond issue that failed 51-49%. Specific streets were mentioned.
Okay.
Being that the track record plus certificates of obligation are issued by most cities, what do you think probably would be the best fit for Castle Hills?
Again, it's really very much of a political question, frankly, or in terms of what you think your community will will do or want. If you think there is a significant chance that you're going to get 5% of the registered voters to sign a petition, and I frankly don't know what that number is, I think Andrew might have mentioned to me, maybe 150 voters or something. I don't know.
It's above two, between 200 and 300, because I got a petition one time to put something on.
If you, if you receive petition with just 200 or 300 people signing it, it'll stop you from doing anything in terms of proceeding with the issuance of debt until you can take that to the voters as a, as a CO, but it wouldn't be until May. Or you could also call a bond election for May and just essentially do the same thing. You would just forego the ability to actually issue the COs and call a bond election. That's essentially what you're kind of talking about tonight, even though you don't have a petition presented to you yet.
But those prior two attempts, councilman, you didn't have a capital improvements plan in place.
Well, I know on the second bond issue, Mr. Paul was very active in opposing it, and I'd like to hear what he thinks right now.
Well, there's a difference, like Ryan said, in this regard. We have a CIP. And I think that's the important issue as far as accountability. First of all, I'm a little, have a little heartburn on changing directions. The only reason that I see we're sitting here to change directions is because of what our mayor just mentioned. And I accept that as a decent, I'm not criticizing that. That's a good reason. We talked about that during the last time. How do we identify? How do we let people know? Now, that being said, we have a CIP. So if we move forward with either one of these obligations at one point or another, we need to get in front of our citizens and say, here's what we're doing, and we are taking according to our engineers' recommendations, the worst projects first. I haven't got a clue. I know I have a bad street, but I haven't got a clue where mine fits in the, it doesn't matter. If we go by that definitive situation before, like Mr. Gregory said, they tried two things. They first tried to come with a whole big, we're going to do this section, we're going to do this section, we're going to do this section, first, second, third. And they had no relativity to which was the worst section. Second thing they came back on, just give us a pot of money, we'll take care of it. But since we do have the CIP, I think that's its advantage. One of the other things is in our discussion before, which way to go with these things, we were told pretty good and explained why we should go with what we went because the added expense, it would be more expensive to do the bond right. The bond way of doing it, am I not correct?
There isn't, yes, there's an expense for holding an election now.
Not just that, there was additional stuff on here. It seems to me like there was 15 to $30,000 much. And I think what's it cost us for an election, seven grand?
Yes, sir.
Is that the only added expense? I mean, in other words, there's still going to be work behind the scenes by the advisors and the people, but would it be the same work?
There would, there'd be the same work. And if you're issuing as a CO or a general obligation bond that's been voted in terms of from the financing side, from what Mark does, what I do, it's essentially the same work.
Okay, so the expense that you would take or the fees would all factor the same.
Those should not change.
So the only additional factor is the expense of the election, in your opinion?
I think that's exactly right. Now, you do have an expense of
I think he's referring to the bond rating. There was, Andrew had mentioned the bond rating, the 15,000, the cost. Is that what you were mentioning?
We would have that regardless of what route we went.
Right, right. The only other expense you would have with the CO issue that would slightly offset a bond election is you're going to have to put a notice in the newspaper twice. And if it's in the Express News, that can be fairly expensive. I'm not sure. You may not be using the Express News, but
That we do.
That can be a fairly expensive item, but it's going to be less than calling.
Well, one of my questions before that concerned me was that theoretically, we were also running a parallel course. We're going through the process to take it to the obligations, to the bonds. And the 5% may or may not be running over here. We could get up to the last, and all of a sudden, 5% of the people show up. And so we could expend the money regardless if we didn't use it, if we had 5% of the people come to us and said, here's what we have to do. You've got to go to an election. So there's, there's, there was a lot of ifs and ands on the other way. And let me ask in this process right here. Again, I agree with the mayor as far as keeping the citizens informed of what we're doing. I can't imagine any citizen complaining that we shouldn't do it because that's all everybody has talked about since I've been around doing any of this. Streets and drainage, streets and drainage. Now, the other side of the fence, what does this do? You were going to use some of the money from the obligation to pay for what we're already doing on Banyan. And it allowed us to do that. Do we have the same flexibility with the bonds?
And again, I think Mark can answer that. Mark, they did a reimbursement resolution with the intent that taking forward the COs to reimburse a current project underway, to essentially put those funds back into our street and drainage funds. Borrowing that project and using that for other street repairs in the future. Now, how does that work as far as the reimbursement resolution they already passed in conjunction with the GOs?
Well, I would suggest, since Tom probably drafted that reimbursement resolution, it talks about future issuance of bonds or debt, that it probably stays in place. But with Tom right there, he'd be able to give you a direct answer.
No, and Mark's exactly right, that what you're having in place will, whether you issue COs or general obligation bonds, you'll be able to reimburse yourself. Yes, sir.
Right, because that added the additional cash flow in the event we needed for some more projects, especially in this situation that we, the country finds ourselves.
And I think, councilman, we can get into that a little bit more, and we have an agenda item in August that says, look, with the reimbursement and the funds back in there, here's the ample amount of street maintenance projects we want to continue to do with that money back essentially in the bank.
All right, the next question, regardless in which way then, Ryan, is sooner rather than later, I guess if we go the bond route, we need to identify pretty quick, I say quick, within the process, how much, which streets and which projects are we going to do, number one? And number two, how are we making the determination on which streets they are? Now, we have our engineers that have put together this CIP. We're not using Cartograph anymore, are we?
The Cartograph, as far as the OCI numbers, were updated for the CIP. And so next year, we're probably going to have to go out and update the pavement condition of these streets next year. But essentially, the data that was in place has been updated for the CIP. So the CIP basically is more accurate as far as the OCI score. Now, to answer your question, that list has already been prepared as far as the worst streets in the 20 and 30 percentile already by our engineers, based on what I requested. That list is already ready to go.
So we do still use Cartograph?
Essentially, the data they used was from Cartograph.
I guess what I'm getting at, it costs us 3,200, 3,400, something like that a year to keep updating it. And if we're past using it anymore, we shouldn't be spending that money.
Well, as a part of putting this CIP together, they actually went back out at the time and reconfirmed those scores on those streets. Now, every five years, a city should be going out and doing a pavement condition index on their streets. So right now, 2016, when I guess when the city got Cartograph and did the initial scores of the OCI, I call them pavement condition index in my previous cities. But next year, we need to go back and have all of our streets scored accordingly. Some are going to be different now that we've done Antler, finishing up Banyan, and some of the recent street work.
Because I think, I think we actually started that in 2014.
Yeah, I think talking to Rick, I thought it was 16 or 15.
It's 14.
But regardless, we, next year, we probably need to get them updated.
I'll be quiet.
Mr. Paul, to your point.
Something, excuse me, sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
One of the things, one of the benefits of a certificate of obligation is that we can put, just like we have, an amount not to exceed the borrowing amount for various projects. And in this case, it was streets and drainage. The drainage part is not necessarily connected to the streets. So if you have a bond election, you're going to say $4 million for streets and 6 million for drainage, or whatever the combination, three and a half for streets and six and a half for, I'm sorry, six and a half for streets, three and a half for drainage, or whatever it is, then those monies cannot be used for anything else. So there's going to be a proposition for streets, yes or no? And a proposition for drainage, yes or no? One can pass and the other could fail. But we can't say we would like to do $10 million for streets and drainage. The COs that you already authorized allows you to do them as one project. Certificate of obligation, amount not to exceed $10 million for streets and drainage.
Well, we would have gone over our CIP plan by then and made that determination before and let the people know ahead of time which direction we're going on, because I think. And, and the amount of money that we, I think we've talked all the way between 5 and 10 million. So we haven't really defined that yet, if I'm correct.
You're correct. I mean, obviously, right now I have an idea of what it might look like split between drainage.
But that will come at another meeting.
That'll come another meeting. And then, Mark, as, as you can know, I, when I emailed Andrew to ask the publication for the notice of intent, the COs had 13 million and change. And that was kind of our ceiling that we'd be looking at to borrow. Actually, that the city would be borrowing $13 million, correct?
That, it's, it was published as the amount not to exceed. So you could be anything less than that. That's why I pulled, pulled 10 just for, for the discussion point. But if it's a CO and you do not exceed, it all can be, or not exceed 13, and there's streets and drainage, drainage in that project list, which is how it is now. All 13 could be for streets. All 13 could be for drainage or any combination. If you have a bond election, we're going to have blank amount for streets and blank amount for drainage.
You're going to be specific.
Those two amounts cannot co-mingle.
Got it. Thank you.
And essentially, Councilman Paul, they will be categorized that way, the projects I have outfitted right now.
So, Mr. Paul, to my point, or to your point, I should say, I realize that this is something that the citizens will need to be made aware of. And it's my hopes that at least last time we voted on this council was in unison that this is something that we need to do. So it's going to be incumbent on us to be stewards of this process. Mr. May?
Well, that, that's exactly where I'm stuck right now, because we have to be having some unanimity here. I mean, there's got to be a solid way of selling this intelligently. I personally don't think that there's much difference intellectually between the CO approach or the bond. We have 40-plus million dollars of past due work that needs to be done. There's no debate about that. So what we're really asking the voters in either one of these processes is to be okay with us nibbling away at a sizable chunk of that back overdue repair work. And the real issue is, what is the cheapest way for us to achieve that? And I think it's, from my perspective, if I'm standing in front of the door of a citizen, I can make the argument most effectively for the certificates of obligation. Now, I think transparency is important, the way that the law is set up. We're messaging the particulars upfront. But the reason the CO seems more appropriate is it gives us, it gives us nimbleness. We can tailor the project based on what the latest we have, the latest word from the engineers. If we think that a drainage issue is far more important, that's where we put the funds. If they're particular streets, they're going to disintegrate and cost us way more in the long run, we can pivot that way. So to me, from an intellectual point of view, it's the CO position. Now, I have least experience on this council running for office. And so we, we have to take that element into consideration. Because if we go the route of the, we're playing a guessing game. If we take the route of a election to do a bond, then we are locked in, as we've been advised. If we don't specify what it's going to be used for, and then we get into the issue of we're going to get cross-cut because people are going to look on a menu list of things that are going to get fixed, and it's not pertinent to maybe their unique interest. And there's a vote no. I think if we look at this from the whole city's perspective, though, how are we going to get to the finish line of the 40 million-plus dollars worth of improvements at the cheapest rate and most efficiently, so that people living in this city can actually get the benefit of their tax dollars within their lifetime? To me, that's the issue. And so I, frankly, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from you, because I think you've done a lot more thinking on this than I have.
I'm of the belief that the best way is to bring it forward before the citizens. I feel like the pandemic can be perceived as something that we did it, we have nobody in this audience right now. Any other time, there would be people here because they want to have their voices heard, they want to offer their opinion. But I'm very cognizant of the fact that we have a serious issue. But I'm very cognizant of the fact that we have a serious issue going on in the world that's preoccupying people. And I want to make sure that we're putting it at the forefront of their mind and making, letting them make a conscious decision about what, the way the city's going to go forward as opposed to doing it while they're preoccupied. Mr. Gregory?
Well, I like the, the ability to leverage the money that a CO offers. And we can take some of that CO money and, and apply it to Banyan and release the funds that we applied to Banyan to other projects. I mean, that jumpstarts drainage projects that are desperately needed now. And we, there won't be the weight and the angst of six more months or twelve more months or however long. This council is somewhat unique in that just about, with one or two exceptions, just about everybody has a great deal of support from a lot of people. And I think a lot of people believe that the, the council as a whole has enough intellectual common sense to address this problem. And uh, the two previous times we looked at it, one was the first time and it was a mishmash and it was somewhat difficult and it barely lost. The second time, the vote speaks for itself. I think people want things done. I think they know things that have to be done. I think they trust all the people who are on the council for, to make the right decisions. But I like the leverage ability of a CO of getting our money back from what we've already scrimped and saved to put into Banyan and to apply a CO money to that, releasing that money and immediately moving to one or two other major drainage projects that have to be addressed. So um-
Mr. Gregory, if I may, maybe I misunderstood and this would be a perfect time to correct me. But I under, the way that I understood, Mrs. Spurgeon, is we can do the same thing with the bond election.
Use bond proceeds to reimburse the city, pre-fee CO proceeds, so it would make a difference.
But you have to identify it upfront? Yeah, but when you're applying, going through the process, you have to identify this for streets, this for drainage, this for repayment of this project over here?
Well, no, no, not, not quite that specific. Not with a bond election, you're, you're going to be doing, um, what Mark was, was getting at is that you're going to have two different propositions. One's going to be for street improvements, one's going to be for drainage improvements. Um, depends on how specific you get inside each of those propositions. Then further restricts, if you will, the, the use of those proceeds. Uh, if you get very specific on, we're only going to do these streets, we're only going to do these drainage projects. Or do you do it general? Uh, I mean, that, that's kind of, that's a big issue. But in terms of reimbursing yourself, if it's a drainage project that you're needing reimbursed, uh, you'll be able to reimburse that with, uh, with proceeds. Um, as long, and, and, and I think you're, I think what your point is, is if that is a, if you're very specific in the bond proposition um, for only specific streets or specific drainage, and money that you've already spent is for a different project, then I think that becomes a little more problematic. But if, as long as we have enough um, flexible language, and I think we can have, we can easily put flexible language in the, in the bond proposition, you shouldn't have any trouble reimbursing yourself for a prior expenditure that is covered by the reimbursement resolution.
Thank you, Mrs. Spurgeon. So, and Mr. May, to your point, I can appreciate the nimbleness. Uh, but honestly, I think we're kind of at a point with forty million dollars where we could throw a rock and hit something that needs to be fixed. Uh, I'm not, I don't see us at the tail end where we need to be as flexible. We haven't heard anything from Mr. Isbrand. Do you have any comments, Mr. Isbrand?
Um, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. I appreciate the chance to weigh in here. I have to say, first of all, that uh, it, it makes me feel pretty good that although that there are some diverse opinions, at least at this early stage about the way to approach this, there is a consensus, a unanimity among the council in their concern about the voters being informed and the voters being engaged. And I would commend everyone for their commitment to that. I would like to put a premise out there, if I can, and poke at this a little bit. It's, I feel like in a way, we are assuming that if we go with COs, that the voters will not be heard unless there is a group that is dissenting and will come forward versus they, if we do it as general obligation bonds and everyone goes to the polls, that the other ninety-five percent plus this five percent has been, has been heard. And I'm, the more I think about this, the more I'm not subscribing to that theory. Because there are uh, points in this process where if we do a really bad job of communicating what it is we want to do with those COs, the public has a chance to stop us and say, let's get the whole community to be involved in this decision-making process. Yes, it would delay where we want to be, and that's the problematic part of it, but there is a point at which they can do that. I think the problem that we really face, and the mayor said it right at the very beginning here, is that nobody has really said anything about this publicly. And what little bit, what little bit has been said has not generated a lot of attention yet. It is our obligation to be very um, uh, very focused on informing the community of sharing information, sharing accurate information, making sure that there is a full understanding out there. And um, I think that that's what will, will really engage people. To Mr. Paul's point, you know, I don't think you can find anyone in the city who is going to say, oh, no, I don't want the streets fixed. I suspect you will find people in the city, as we all do probably every day of, I wish you'd fix mine first. But we know, to the point that Mr. May was making about forty million, that we're not going to get all this accomplished. But we know that going at the current pace that we are going at, we're going to make little headway in what we need to get done and conditions are going to get worse and worse and worse. The community has put their faith in us to make decisions. And if we make decisions and make sure that we are out in front of them to explain them, to help them understand, then they can determine whether it's appropriate to say, no, stop, let's take this to the voters as a whole. Or yes, we understand what we're trying to do and we're behind you. So I guess what I'm, I'm trying to say tonight is I, I feel like at least part of this conversation has been a discussion about the fear of five percent. And I don't think the fear should be about five percent. I think the fear, if there is one, should be about us not doing the effective job that we need to do of communicating to people of the benefit that would come from this. And from the discussion that we've had tonight and the points that have been made, there is certainly far more flexibility, it seems to me, with certificates of obligation and less risk of more time going by and interest rates going up if we were to um, you know, have it protracted and, and extend out. So um, those are my initial thoughts on it. I don't know that that brings any greater clarity what, to what you're thinking of. But again, I would say, I don't think this is an issue of um, we need to worry about five percent or we need to feel that the public is not being engaged. If we do our job, the public will be engaged. If the public really doesn't think that we're doing the right thing, they will make it possible for everyone to go to the polls to let their voices be heard on whether they support this or not.
Uh, Mr. Rappley?
Um, Council, I just want to make a point and, and address what Councilman Gregory mentioned a little while ago about the, the attempts on this bond election. And from my standpoint as city manager here, that um, you know, as I said, there wasn't a CIP in place during the last two elections. So there wasn't a road map in place, so it was not transparent for seeing, for the residents to see what projects there are and when they're going to get done. But I think over in the last eighteen months, from the council and staff all the way down, has proven themselves that we can take on large projects like this, you know? We just completed Antler, you know, one point four million and change. Uh, that was done essentially on time on project and, you know, we've done another two point three, uh, excuse me, three point two million dollar project in Banyan right now, which is essentially ahead of schedule. Uh, so I think we've proven ourselves that we can take on these big capital projects, proven ourselves to the citizens that we as staff uh, can handle this and move these projects quickly. And, and I just wanted to say that I think we've proven ourselves. Um, so I'm optimistic that, that the residents could see that um, we could take these tasks on, move these projects and get these things done.
Mr. Paul?
One more question for our guest. You mentioned interest rate. Would it be presumed or should we assume that the interest rates, no matter which direction we go, would be the same?
I would suggest-
Bond versus-
I'm going to let Mark answer that, but you're talking about some different timing too. I mean, if you, if you go CO route, you're going to be issuing bonds um, in mid-September.
Right.
If you go the GO route, you're going to be issuing bonds probably-
Well, let's forget that. I'm talking about under the assumption that they would both be the same timing, even though they won't. Are we talking, i- is there any difference i- in, in the interest rate in which direction? That's what I want to know.
No.
Okay, thank you.
And Mark, go ahead and weigh in.
Well, that's, yeah, if they're issued at the same time, it'll be the same interest rate.
Right, right. It's the exact same security. They're, they're um-
And the only thing- But that wasn't what Mr. Paul was asking.
I'm sorry?
He wasn't asking that. If a CO is issued in, in September.
Right.
You get the interest rate as of September. If you have a bond issue, that is in November or May, depending on which one you do. And that's subject to the interest rate of that time.
No, no, that's right.
He answered me correctly. My question basically, I was trying to make sure, assuming the same timing, which I know it's not, are the interest rates theoretically on both instruments the same? That's all I'm, that's all I'm looking at. If there's any advantage to go one or the other, just on interest rates. Now, I realize timing, let's face it, it could be cheaper, but it's pretty, it's pretty cheap now.
And, and I think, Mark, you can confirm that if COs were, were completed in September, um, and we're looking at an October timeframe that we would receive the funds. In between that time, September, October, we'd already start working to initiate some of these projects. So essentially, the projects that we are selecting would be about two to three months ahead of schedule in the pipeline moving forward, I believe.
Mr. May?
Again, I'm just, I'm searching for that one factor element that steers us in the right direction. So, Mr. Rappley, knowing the two options, there's a jump of two months on getting things started. And again, I just wanted to reemphasize that if we went the route of knowing by September through the uh, certificates, we would be far ahead down the road in accomplishing that. From your perspective, to have to execute uh, the performance of the projects we're going to stick with, which is your op, which would be your preference?
Well, I mean, again, I'm, I'm going to go with council's desire. Um, if, if I want to get these projects done quicker, obviously, the CO route is quicker. And as Councilman Gregory said, it's more, um, you have more ability to use those funds towards different projects. The flexibility of it as well. Um, now, I couldn't tell you, you know, because some of these projects would have to be engineered. So probably some of the reconstructed streets, give or take um, a month or two for engineering and then going out for bid. So, you know, depending on the weather, uh, we could be as early as the spring on doing some of these streets. Um, reimbursing the money back in Banyan would allow us to be um, continue with the street maintenance program because we have thirty streets in there. We've only done ten now. Um, and the Mimosa Cromeria project is pretty much at an eighty, ninety percent engineered. So we could essentially go to bid at the end of this year if the money's in the bank in October. Um, so uh, again, I'm, I'm, I, I'll work with whatever council desires. Um, I do like the idea of being transparent um, to the voters in this case. Um, you know, the city has never issued COs and um, the idea that it would go to the voters and hopefully I'd be optimistic that it would pass because I think streets and drainage is the priorities. Um, that after that, you could have the faith in the residency, the citizens here and the residents to, to allow for the CO process to be the next step. Um, my experience, I've come from cities where we did COs because it was the, a larger city, but it was already the established process to borrow to do projects. Plus, because there was different funds, water, sewer, um, those were based on rates to pay back the debt payment as well. So um, I'm open to any council consideration. Knowing that the COs is quite a faster process and give or take, you can get things done two or three months quicker.
Mayor?
Mr. Isbrand, yes, sir.
Uh, I'm sorry, I just want to underscore again in, in response to Mr. Rappley's comment there. It's like doing COs doesn't mean we're not being transparent. Now, I, I get what you're saying of, you know, let's have everybody go to the polls and do this. But we're not, there isn't a lack of transparency here unless we never come back and say, this is how much we're planning on borrowing, this is how we plan to, to spend it. This is what our intention is. I think the imperative for us is to get that information put together post-haste to present it to the public. And if the public then says they don't like it or they don't think we're being transparent enough, they can inject their will, as they should, and we would take it to, to a vote. But again, to, to make the argument is that we're not being transparent unless we have a bond election, I don't think is the case. But I think that uh, we may have perhaps a greater obligation of transparency on us in short order to make sure that we have good, accurate information out there and that we are using every resource available to us to ensure that our community is informed about it.
I agree with Mr. Isbrand.
Mr. Snell, do you have any comments?
No, not really, Mayor. I think that, um, as Mr. Rappley said, um, this is a, a decision for the governing body. Um, I think Mr. Rappley and Mr. Spurgeon, Mr. McLeaney and I will all, you know, work to do whatever, implement whatever the council as a whole decides on this issue. Um, you've heard a number of varying opinions. Um, the only comment I will make, um, and, and I will make this again, uh, when this ultimately gets moved forward, um, is that there are very strict prohibitions against the use of any city money or city resources of any kind to promote how a voter is to vote on a bond issue. And eh, by analogy, I think that means that city resources cannot be spent on um, explaining why doing the certificate of, uh, uh, certificate of obligation is better for the city. What we can do and what city resources can be used for, and I asked Mr. Spurgeon to comment on this as well, is the city can provide strictly factual information. Um, so we can explain exactly what Mr. Isbrand just said. We can explain in a factual um, uh, presentation what a CFO is, what the proceeds of these CFOs will be used for. Um, and, and demonstrate that transparency in that fashion. But, but we can't advocate for a bond issue. We can't advocate against people doing a petition drive, uh, using city money. Individual um, citizens, including individual members of the governing body, can speak on their own behalf, using their own resources. Uh, my personal recommendation is that if a member of the governing body does decide to um, advocate in one way or another, that um, he should not use his title um, as a member of the governing body. Um, and, and should try to, again, keep it as factual as possible and make it very clear that no city resources are being used um, in regard to trying to influence a vote or other action regarding either the CFOs or the bonds.
Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, real quick, and I just want to make sure council's all aware, and I know I mentioned this after um, we had moved forward with the Banyan project. But um, you know, we have a drainage fund, a street maintenance fund, and then a street and drainage fund. And um, you know, a couple of years ago, before we started all these projects, we were, you know, if not close to five million dollars. And now we are going to be essentially um, uh, down, I'm going to say zero, but very little funds in those accounts. Um, so if we didn't do the COs or, or the GOs, bonds did not pass- Um, so if we didn't do the COs or or the GOs bonds did not pass, we would have to kind of wait to allow for those funds to essentially um recuperate through our multiple revenue streams in those funds over the next year or two, which ultimately would delay projects further down the road. So I just want to make sure council's aware of that. And I think I mentioned that after we move forward with the Banyan project. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Mr. Snoll, if we wanted to stay where we are, do we just make a motion to adjourn and see if anybody wants to go along with it?
Um, it it might be better rather than doing a motion to adjourn, which is a a preferential motion, and I don't believe there can be discussion. It seems to me, Mr. Paul, that it would be really more appropriate um, perhaps to make a motion to take no action and that motion could then be discussed. Um, the the risk in a motion to adjourn is that it it doesn't allow for the kind of continuing discussion um that might be appropriate on an on an issue of this magnitude, especially since if you do not act tonight, it's too late. Um, because in order to have another meeting, we have to give seventy-two hours' notice. And by the time Mr. Rappley gives seventy-two hours' notice, even if he gives it at seven twenty-eight PM tonight, which is physically impossible, um, to do it in three minutes, um, it's the meeting, the earliest the meeting could be is Friday night at seven twenty-nine PM. And we can't publish on Friday or before Friday.
All right, I got you.
Okay?
Mr. Snoll is correct. So from this standpoint, I have to publish in the Express News by this Friday, which means um I have to provide it to them Thursday morning.
I move that we take no action on rescinding Resolution Number twenty twenty dash oh seven dash fourteen.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Paul, a second by Mr. Gregory. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.
Mayor, I would just like to add that that what Councilman Isbrand had mentioned about informing and educating. Uh, again, the publication may have a certain dollar amount. Doesn't mean that we will borrow up to that amount. And I think, again, we have a a organized and detailed plan that shows streets and drainage at a certain amount that's not even close to what would be the publicized amount. Just want to make that clear.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, first by Mr. Paul. Second by Mr. May. All in favor? Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.